All right, good evening. Today is Thursday, July 6th. It is 6:30 PM. We're in the Berlin Room of the Olentangy Administrative Office. This is the Olentangy Local Schools Board of Education. I'll call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting. Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Dr. Dabricko?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Dr. Wise?
Here.
Dr. Wallach?
Here.
All right, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written. We have no amendments or changes.
Some.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first, a second. Any discussion on the agenda? All right, Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
All right, Board President's Report, I'll start, and then obviously other board members, feel free to chime in with any kind of updates you may have. As I was driving over here tonight, reminded me, while many people think summer is a very quiet time at school, it is not. New pavement at Freedom Trail on the way over, new turf for the orange, all kinds of projects going on, so custodians ripping apart the buildings and getting them ready for next year. So it's a very, very busy time, and I think it's good for folks to, and us, to acknowledge the work of the custodial staff, the maintenance staff, getting Jeff's team and getting all this work done in a very tight window of opportunity to get all this work done over the summer, or the schools are supposed to be empty, when I know that basketball, football, they're all out there in the gym doing workouts. So it's a, well, some may think it's an easy time of year, it's not, and I want to recognize the efforts of those teams getting all that work done in a very tight window. So Jeff, thanks to you and your team and the rest of the custodial staff. So that, any other updates to my left?
I do have one, and this will be Update 1B, and you'll do 1A. I want to thank the Olentangy community and everyone who made their voices heard about the state budget. You never get everything you want, and you might not get most of what you want, but for every family in Olentangy, this state budget with Fair School Funding Plan is tax relief. It's going to allow us to do more with less local dollars and more state dollars. We're getting more of a return on our state taxes, which we should have gotten. We'll write more when we get the numbers, for sure, but historically, I don't think we've ever had this great of a commitment from the state to support Olentangy schools, and they should, because we're kind of a big deal and people know us. But we do, we do well with that money. We steward it well, and as you were talking about, Mr. O'Brien, we're doing preventive makes, all these things. So I want to recognize the School Advocacy Committee, some of the folks are here, Julie Fiesel's here, Lizette is back there, I don't see anybody else. They met with folks, communication, constant information, letting our voices be heard. Other folks, Dr. Sampson of Powell, Kelly Kamen, Sarah Zimmerman, who else am I forgetting? Met with our local legislators to just say, wait a minute, you guys got to do better by Olentangy. So big success, and this budget represents tax relief for our Olentangy families, so that's, that's good. And we'll talk more about Mental Health Committee after, all right, good. That's all I've got, Mr. O'Brien.
All right, we'll move right into our first presentation, first and only presentation item, the Student Wellbeing and Mental Health Ad Hoc Board Committee. So again, this is an effort that Mr. Lester kicked off last year at about this time, right, about a year ago, and I'm interested and excited to hear about how things are going and where we're going next. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Alicia Berens.
Thank you. Mr. Lester, did you want to say a few words first, or you want me to go ahead and?
Well, and we'll tell you over and I just thank you, Mr. O'Brien, for launching that, and we're very excited to present all this. I also want to recognize a couple committee members that made the trip out here. So Ms. Moran, Ms. Hanson, one of our students especially, who graduated and has decided to come back to see the fruits of what we've done and all of the hard work that we've put in. And before we start, I want to give a preemptive thanks to Dr. Berens and Ms. Branson for all of the work that they've done. They are really pioneers of this work across the state. We were lucky to come into a situation where we already did so much, and the whole idea of this was not to start from scratch, but to really build on what we're doing and get those community voices involved in it. So with that, I'll turn it over and let you present all the wonderful work that happened this year.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Lester. Yeah, so I'm rounding out my seventh year here in Olentangy in this role. I think that Mr. Rafe created my position, and I was the first one in this type of a role, and then suddenly all of these school districts have wellbeing folks who are doing this kind of work as well. And I just went to a Superintendent's Association meeting specifically about mental health, and there's a mental health cohort, so it's certainly growing recognition, and the committee put in a lot of work to kind of come up with some ideas and recommendations for the board. So a quick summary of the work that our committee did. So we had over 180 applicants who had applied to be part of this committee, which was an amazing response. So many people felt very passionate about this work and wanted to be a part of this committee. Unfortunately, you can only have a committee so big without it taking over the world. So we looked through the applications, we tried to find a diverse group of different parents, different community members with varying experience, different grade levels, different parts of the district, because it all looks different, and so we did end up with 20 committee members. We obviously had our two Board of Education members, Dr. Dabricko and Mr. Lester, three district administrators, which were Dr. Fetti, myself, and Dr. Branson. We had three certified staff, one high school teacher, one elementary teacher, and one school counselor, and then eight parents of varying grade levels and different backgrounds. Some had personal experience with mental health, with themselves and/or their students, some had also professional experience as a psychologist, as a pediatrician, so we had a wide variety of information that was able to be given to us at these committee meetings. We also had four high school students who were part of our committee to give us the student voice and student perspective as well. We met 10 times throughout last year, from September to June, and we had an attendance rate of 75.5%, which I think in the world of committees was pretty good, especially with the time commitment. I felt like we were, every time we had a meeting, we would get to our ending point and have so much more to share, but we wanted to make sure we were respecting everyone's time. So with our committee, we came up with a mission, and first part of our mission was to further cultivate a culture of care by exploring ways in which the district can collect and utilize timely data to better serve students' wellness and mental health needs. And the second part of our mission was to create an open discourse that will break stigmas and educate students, teachers, staff, and community members to move forward mental fitness while addressing the individual and universal needs of the community. So we wanted to make sure our mission was very holistic, looking at wellbeing and mental health as a whole, and all the different aspects, and not only focusing on the students' wellbeing, but also staff members, parents, and our community. We wanted to continue to build upon the things that we have started the last seven years, which has been a wonderful experience. This was our first year of being a student wellbeing department, so to be able to have this committee continue to build on that work has been a real blessing. Thank you. So we came up with six goals with our committee, the first one being reducing stigma and increasing mental health literacy, the second being strengthening communication, visibility of resources, programming, and supports at the building, district, and community levels, as well as focused efforts on specific groups, and I'll go into more detail in the next few slides. Third, make informed recommendations based on both quantitative and qualitative data, improve teacher and staff wellbeing supports and resources, explore additional curriculum, programming, and supports to help students develop healthy ways to deal with anxiety, stress, and depression, and utilize student innovation and increase student engagement. So those were the six goals that we very purposely took all of the information that we gathered over those 10 sessions and kind of took it all and pieced together and came up with these six specific goals. And then from those goals, we moved into certain recommendations, some are more broad and generic, and some are more focused, and we broke it into what Dr. Branson and I have been doing over the summer, the things that we've been working on, things that we're going to be working on through this next school year, and then things beyond next school year. The next few slides are a little busy with lots of words, I'm not going to read every bullet point, I'm just going to highlight a few of the recommendations in each of the goals. The first overall goal, though, is for our board committee, that has been an ad hoc committee, to become a formal, permanent board committee moving into next calendar year. So that would be our first recommendation of our committee. For reducing stigma and increasing mental health literacy, to highlight a few of the things, one of the big projects we were hoping to move forward with is to have a wellbeing workshop, kind of similar to the One Community Conference that the diversity team does, maybe on a smaller scale, since this is our first year, but really having breakout sessions and a keynote speaker focusing on mental health and wellbeing that our community members, students, and staff can all attend and gain more knowledge around this area. We also are in the process of creating an Olentangy Student Wellbeing and Mental Health PSA. We're working with our Communications Department on creating a visual video that we can send out to community members, we can play at open houses, we can play before board meetings and things like that, to really bring more attention to what our student wellbeing department looks like, the services that we have in place, and just make, make what we do more accessible to students and to family members. We also want to look at introducing student wellbeing liaisons, similar to how we have diversity liaisons, to be champions in the building for the student wellbeing services and projects that we're doing in each building. And then beyond, next school year, we're hoping to look at some kind of mental health student orientation to continue to broaden the discussion on mental health, let students know where they can get help if they need it, and things like that. For strengthening communication and visibility of resources, one of the things that we found is that we have many things in place, but not everybody knows about them. Students don't know about them, parents don't know about them. So what can we be doing to make what we have in place more visible? So a few of those things are creating our own wellbeing department website. Previously, we were under kind of different websites, so it was difficult to find, so being a standalone department website, and creating like a fax fact sheet that we can see how many, you know, school counselors we have, how many social workers we have, how do you access them, things like that. We want to make sure the communications that we're giving to our families is very intentional and very clear. We also want to work with the PTOs to have a parent wellbeing liaison to help parents access services for theirselves or their students. Sometimes it's easier to go to another parent than maybe a staff member. We also want to look at targeting messages for specific groups, so how does mental health and wellbeing look to a gifted student, to an athlete in special ed? So we want to make sure we're making our services and our communication accessible to all of our students. We also want to make sure we're hosting tabling events to further communicate what we're doing at convocation, at open houses, things like that. With making informed recommendations on quantitative and qualitative data, we're hoping to do a needs assessment for students and staff. We certainly can say what we think that students and staff need, but until we actually get that data showing what the needs are in their own voice, we'll be able to make better informed decisions with that. We also want to make sure our community shares their impression of mental health and what does mental health look like in schools, so getting that data as well. We also want to make sure we're finding clear outcomes measures for the programs and things that we're implementing, so we make sure that what we're putting in place is actually being effective, and we're not just putting things in place just to put them there. For improving teacher and staff wellbeing support and resources, we want to first evaluate the resources that we currently have, looking at our EAP program, looking at our Mount Carmel program, what is the utilization of those things, and then build upon what else can we be providing to our staff members. We also are putting together a resource library for staff members to be able to access. Teachers are the ones who are seeing students day in and day out. They need to have the tools and resources to be able to support the students, because they're more likely to see that student struggling first before they go to the school counselor, so we want to make sure that they have those tools. And then beyond, we want to look at how we can continue to build our staff wellbeing based on the outcome and needs assessment from the staff. These are the last two. Exploring additional curriculum programming and supports, one of the big projects we've been working on is seeking licensure through the state Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. We're going to be putting out an FAQ on what that means. Basically, it will be an equivalent to ODE, overseeing schools. It will be the, OMAS is what they call it, overseeing the mental health services that we're providing in the schools, making sure we're hiring the appropriately trained people, we're doing the appropriate documentation, we're getting the appropriate consents from parents, all of those types of things. So it's going to provide an extra level of oversight for us, and also additionally open up some grant opportunities to be able to support the services that we're providing. We're also looking at expanding some of the training for our school staff, teachers, school counselors, social workers, to be able to provide more specific, specific types of therapies and things like that to our students. And then we also want to look at our ratios that we have of our school counselors and our social workers. And then beyond that, we're going to just continue to explore what that all looks like, and again, looking at those outcome measures. With utilizing student innovation and increased student engagement, we want to make sure, again, that the students are saying what it is that they need. I've found that students are very open to talking about this, sometimes maybe more so than the staff members or the adults in their world. So making sure we're using their voice, using focus groups, so that they can tell us what is it that they need, what is effective for them, is it going to make sense for us to add more staff, or is it going to make more sense to do some peer training, so that their peers know how to interact with them if they're struggling? We also want to make sure our Active Minds chapters that we have at the high schools, which is a mental health club that is student sponsored, is really getting involved and hosting events, and again, having some of those tabling activities, so we can get some more involvement in those. So that is a quick summary of the last 10 months that we have spent with the Student Wellbeing Committee, and I am open to any questions that you may have.
So, you know, to start, I guess process wise, so we don't have an action item on today's agenda?
Correct.
So we need to consume and absorb the recommendations, and I guess at some future meeting, come back with an action item to move forward?
Well, and a lot of these don't necessarily require board action, per se, right?
Well, the establishment, the committee would.
Right, there are certain aspects of it that will require, there are certain aspects that are just handled through the department.
Correct.
I think what the idea of presenting all this is, is both to share some of the work that they can already do, you know, without us going through it all, and then give a preview of what some of these things may look like, especially as we talk about, you know, what hiring may be, what the committee may be, what some of these things are, that will be in discussion with the district leadership team, you know, over time, in terms of what that may look like.
Well, yeah, because, okay, because I guess part of my question around establishing it as a board committee, is the recommendation that it would be the same composition, the same structure, the same cadence, and would it, you know, go through an application process on an annual basis? So some of those details, not to get in the weeds tonight, but some of those details probably need to be hashed out, as well as, to the extent there's incremental cost of liaisons, licensure, we need to understand that.
Yep, absolutely.
And fit it into the five-year forecast, if we move forward with that.
Right, and a lot of this stuff will be specific action items over time, and we couldn't just present it all, because, you know, as you look at some of it, there's some short-term stuff, there's some much longer-term stuff, so it all, it sort of has to play out in due time.
Good.
For example, one of the ideas that I didn't highlight was looking at elementary prevention curriculums, and we'd have to explore which ones, we just didn't have time in the 10 months that we were working with establishing the committee and moving forward, so looking at what those curriculums are, exploring which ones would be the best, maybe doing small pilots to figure out what would work best, similar to how we do our other curriculum trials, and then if we choose to move forward, presenting it as an action item potentially to most likely purchase some kind of prevention curriculum.
So, you know, I think the value of this committee, and what we saw over time, is there's a lot of services that are provided generally, right? But we can only see those from the side of the table, or from the administration side of the table. When we start to get the direct community feedback about what's working and what's not working, that allows us to identify some of those blind spots in action and then start to tailor it. So a lot of these things, while we're talking about them at a really high level, it's because, you know, we have parents on this, and they said, I wasn't even aware of this. I'm very tuned into mental health, and I wasn't aware of this. How do we communicate this better? I know people are looking for this, how do we reach them? I know that I had an issue accessing services this way, what can we do about that? That has to play out on a really, you know, as I said at the outset, we are blessed that we don't have to start from square one with a department on this. We already have a lot of work that's being done here, so how can we start to address this over time with the tweaks that we need to make sure that we're doing the best services we can?
Okay, any other questions, comments in the board?
I'm trying to gather my thoughts here, that was, I'm just, I'm tremendously impressed with what everyone was able to accomplish in just 10 meetings. That's a heck of a foundation that was laid. I'm impressed by so much. I think that the idea of working evaluation in is imperative. I think the outreach to our students, our staff, and our community is so important. This kind of echoes what, what Mr. Lester said, but we, we know sitting here, we've received presentations on occasions, we know about the ample services that are available, but they don't work if we don't, if those who need them aren't aware of them. So, so many ideas were built into that presentation, the hard work that's gone into all of this. You know, we're, we're a district filled with high achievers, and I think there's so often this idea that if you're a high achiever, life is great. And, you know, I just was recently reading a book about how statistically they, high achievers carry a whole lot of stress. So what are we doing for meeting all of the needs of our learners? I'm just, I'm very pleased with this, this is great, so thank you to everyone involved.
I knew you'd love program evaluation.
We can never say thank you enough. This was a lot of work and a lot of sacrifice for folks in the community that were there. There's other things you can be doing on a Wednesday night, and so thank you for being there, thank you for contributing, thank you for sharing. I mean, there were some hard meetings, man, it was like very emotional stuff to hear where people are at, and it just reinforces the point that none of the teaching and learning that we're so proud of in our district can happen at a high level unless we're taking care of our students and our staff and our whole community. So that's the first thing that I just wanted to reinforce. The second thing is, we want to be ahead of this curve, because we know how, where we're at, we're seeing things that are being reported and research coming out, and we want to be ahead of this. Olentangy was ahead of the reading curve 12, 15 years ago, right? So science of reading isn't new to us in Olentangy. We want to be ahead of this as well, and the last thing is, no one in the state has that licensure. That's a big deal.
No school district.
No school district, thank you, yes, of course, yeah. No K-12 public school district has that licensure, and it just equips us to better meet our students' needs. So thank you very much for what you did, and, because those meetings are at night, and there's other things, so thank you. It was, it was well worth the time. Thank you to Mr. Lester and all our community folks. It was good to be there.
Yeah, and what I'll just add on is, you know, to your question, I think about what the committee looks like, you know, with all of our committees, we have people that sort of come in and come off, and because we were starting this so quickly, we had an application process. I know that there are a lot of people on the committee that indicated that they'd still be interested, and obviously, we have a couple students that have graduated and other things like that. I think it's important that we have some consistency, but we also have, you know, rotating in of fresh ideas, right? So I think the idea would be if we could sort of continue this ad hoc for a couple more months until next year, where we have a specific action item to vote on, and it's a full committee, then we can start to, you know, process some changes in membership to make sure that we're continuing, we're not just having the same group of people having the same blind spots. You know, we try to make sure that we're really getting good perspective, because as this work continues, and as we sort of bounce ideas back and forth like we do with the Facilities Committee, like we do with a lot of others, we're able to really get that good community perspective and thoughtfulness that helps to drive some of these recommendations.
And, you know, for me, my comments are more around, you and I probably need to spend some time getting very specific on what do we need to approve?
Right.
What's going to happen anyways?
Right.
Let's get this thing set up right?
Yeah.
Right, so that we don't go down a path and have to pull back and do it again. So it's really getting specific on, you know, whether it's the August meeting or September that we get specific on, what do we need to approve and talk about in terms of structured funding, charter, et cetera? And get that, get that work going.
Right, for sure.
Okay.
I'd like to add, can I talk now?
So, one, thank you, I think this is absolutely great. One thing that did stick out to me was the targeted messages to the specific groups. I think that's very important, that we make sure we reach all of our, you know, groups of students. And then staff, like what is that, like the definition of staff, is that just the teachers, or is that everyone?
In my opinion, it's everyone. It's everyone working with the students, because if they're, you know, if you have a food service worker who's struggling, they're not going to be doing their best at work to be able to support those students, and we know that students even go to the food service worker, or the custodian, or their bus driver. So we want to make sure everyone is included in that kind of staff wellbeing aspect.
Okay, is this our coaches?
Yeah, their staff, yeah, absolutely.
All right, that's it.
Okay, good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, the next agenda items, the Superintendent's Report, make sure everybody knows, if you didn't miss a memo or a meeting, Mr. Myers out of town, he couldn't make it tonight, so Dr. Fetti, Director of Superintendent, is stepping in to present the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, I'm pleased to present an abbreviated report in Mr. Myers' absence, so just looking at tonight's action items, this agenda looks like a typical summer action item, a lot of employment and a lot of capital projects. I'd like to point out that Ms. Preston is here, if you'd like to say hello, she's our new Assistant Director of Strategic Partnerships, Mr. Schoeff, as the curriculum supervisor moving from Orange Middle School. I don't believe there are any other new hires in the building or in the room. And then the rest of the items on this page are capital projects, including a canopy that'll go at Cheshire Elementary School to connect the modulars that we're, we've previously discussed. And then on the next slide, I would like to point out that Mr. Myers organized a leadership team retreat on the 18th and 19th of this month. I think it will actually happen in this building, so retreat is being used loosely. And, very important for our parents, the Power School Parent Portal will open on August 10th, that's where student schedules will be housed. And then also for the entire community, including the board, the grand opening of Berlin Middle School is scheduled for the Sunday, August 13th, at 1:00 PM, and our next Board of Education meeting is August 10th. Any questions about tonight's agenda items?
Not a question, but just because I think some people may see this with the Hyatts, because it's a change order with that. Can you speak, or maybe Jeff could speak just briefly about why we need to have a change order for that?
Sure, Jeff, would you mind?
The reason for this change is that tracks, the age of Hyatts, usually we've been able to peel up the track surface and put a new surface down before having to do much with the asphalt, and the surface, the asphalt, once you got the track up, it really deteriorated. So we didn't think it was wise to put new surface down without addressing the core issue of underneath, so every track's a little bit different, we seem to run into, we've upgraded the surface we're using to try to avoid some of the water getting through and doing some of those things, but each track, we just, until we get that off, we don't know what we're going to necessarily find, so.
Great.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Jenkins, give the Treasurer's Report, please.
So what I wanted to do this evening was just to cover some of the key provisions of the budget bill, and it's a pretty straightforward analysis that, as Dr. Dabricko mentioned, it's a tremendous increase for the district. It is tax relief that allows our community to get back some of ultimately the income taxes and sales taxes and other things that go to the state of Ohio. So I would have to say how appreciative I am, sitting here nine months ago, if you would have said that all of these provisions would have put in place, I would have just simply said, you're wrong, there's no way. But every one of these checks, a very big box for us. But every one of these checks, a very big box for us. The House Chamber, their version of the Fair School Funding Plan, which really was the fidelity of the plan to begin with, it uses 22 base cost inputs. The biggest piece that had been changed by the Senate, and that's not to be disrespectful, the Senate's version would have increased our funding as well. But one of the pieces that they got rid of was the weighting of the 20% adjusted, federal adjusted gross income. Say that 10 times really fast. What that measure was, the median is an important measure when you have three numbers, and those three numbers are 9, 10, and 100. Obviously, the average of 9, 10, and 100 is dramatically pulled up by the outlier of 100. So, when that 20% adjusted, federal adjusted gross income got thrown out, the wealth of the district was dramatically increased by statistical outliers that were much, much higher. And the median then, as the middle value, was more representative. And so, in the original Funding Formula Group, there was an equal weight on both pieces to try to capture the fact that you didn't want outliers to drag that in the other direction. Ultimately, there was a lot of talk about how to change valuation, which would have ruined my master classes because they would have taken everything I showed. No, it wouldn't have been that bad. They were going to, if you all recall, you look at the year right before the reeval, and that really is your big year. They were going to do a three-year blended average. But there was some pretty good discussion. And of all groups, the Auditors Association, the statewide Auditors Association, basically came out and said that they felt like if you threw in those valuation changes that were being discussed, that there would be unintended consequences and other things that would maybe cause it to not be as fair as they hoped that they were making it. So, at the end of the day, the reevaluation and triennial appraisal system is essentially the same. I'm ready for the next slide, wherever it's being zipped from. What does it mean for the district? Again, it's a significant development for our community and its families. The dark blue bar graph is the estimated funding, but that is right now with a flat funded enrollment of 21,842 students, give or take a student. That number might not jibe with what number you're carrying in your head. How can we say we're over 23,000? Remember, that's funded enrollment, so it wouldn't include preschoolers, and it would be kindergartners cut in half. Just using the 21,842, we're getting about a $15 million increase, 15 point, looks like, actually, yeah, 15.2 million dollars roughly for the 23, 24 school year. And the part that could knock me over with a feather, if you would have said our state funding would almost double by 2025, I just would have thought that, you know, you were living on some other planet. In actuality, when our enrollment is growing...
How many mils is that? 15 million? Is it like five?
Right now, a mil on $6 billion of valuation is 6 million.
Okay. Two and a half. Two and a half mils?
Yep.
That's good.
So, ultimately, we're going to have, my guess would be by 2025, I was just looking at the five-year projections, I'm thinking our state funding in that year will be closer to $43 million. So, that is a direct impact because as we know, we're moving towards, and we've started to discuss as a, as a board leadership team, what our next levy looks like. I know that this will allow for at least a couple and a half to three mils of space that we won't have to ask for operationally.
Say that again.
Couple and a half to three mils. It's a funny way to say two and a half. Sorry. So, that is just a remarkable, I hate to say accomplishment. I just want to say thank you to our legislators who really took on and took very seriously the Fair School Funding Formula. Couldn't be more pleased. The next slide shows a few more issues. The scholarship program will expand. The reason that that is something I included is the income level. It'll be up to 450% of the federal poverty level, and that currently for a family of four is about $135,000. So, it's fair to assume that that will be a benefit for some families in the Olentangie community who avail themselves of private schools. That's $5,500 in grades K-8, 7,500 in 9-12. There's a sliding income. If you go to, I think, 550, 650, they go up in increments of 100% of federal poverty level. And then, in future years, those amounts, if you're a creature of statute and you love that stuff, 331008 of revised code, which is basically the Ed Choice Scholarship amounts, will kind of apply. Minimum teacher salary, and that minimum teacher salary really for Olentangie is not really applicable. We're already above that 35, but there are some areas of Ohio where they are at the state minimum. So, that went from 30 to 35. And then, some provisions of Senate Bill 1 that did get pulled in, namely, ODE is now going to become the Department of Education and Workforce. I'm not sure I like the acronym DO, but that's what it is. DO will have the Division of Primary and Secondary Education, and then the Division of Career Tech. And finally, the State Board will have limited duties. They're going to appoint the Superintendent of Public Instruction. They're going to handle licensure and territory transfers, but a lot of the big policy decisions are going to be handled by the administrative branch and as a direct liaison to the governor. So, that's new. The next slide is something that I believe I conflated two bills, which I think is probably easy to do. House Bill 33 was the budget bill, so that technically shouldn't say budget bill update. I continue, it should say other legislative updates. But the budget bill did make some minor tweaks in the section of revised code that deals with when the presidential primary is, but it didn't tweak that provision itself. So, I knew there was a bill though that did, and that's House Bill 21. That bill has not passed. So, that's a huge development for the district too, because that means that if, when, as we start to pick up steam towards a levy, if it's in the spring of 2024, it will be in March, not May. I can't fathom that they would shove through legislation right now that they would not try to put off. Maybe they would. But we're only a year away, less than a year away from the presidential primary. I would think that would be pretty disruptive to somehow now try to push through a bill to change that in 2024. Why is that important? Remember, on all ballot issues, especially for bond issues, we're at least 120 days out of Election Day. I didn't look when it was in March, but if you come backwards 120 days, we're talking that we will need to, certainly, we'll talk through more of our recommendations on the win, but if you have any hope of going at all, it's going to have to be early November at the latest. That wouldn't necessarily be the recommendation that we're going to offer at some point in the future, but we lost two months of time. I hate to use the word "lost." I think we've had pretty good success in this district when we go in presidential primaries. That bill is currently sitting in the House Government Oversight Committee. No hearings have been scheduled. That doesn't mean it might not pick up steam, but for now, it's just basically sitting. My action items are just simply the June 20th board meeting minutes, and I'll entertain any questions about that report.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Jenkins?
Point of clarification.
Dr. Wise, you have any questions?
Cash on hand, I think that's 20 days. Extra.
Oh, in terms of picking up 20 days?
20 days.
Yeah. That's good. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. We'll now move into public participation.
I have nothing unless there's something out there.
Okay. All right. Now, we'll go to our one and only discussion items, the first reading of the board policy updates.
Right. There's someone with their hand up.
Could I participate?
Well, we didn't...
We didn't get a form, but it's your call.
No. Yeah, I'll allow it. Go ahead.
So, my name is Dr. Laurel Barr, and I'm here with my husband, Dr. Patrick Barr, and my three children, William, Gabriel, and Aurora Barr, who are all members of the Olentangie School District, as well as the St. Andrews community. And I'm here tonight because one of the actionable bill items is to deny my children busing service again this year. We moved into the school district in 2020 in June, at the advice of some of the members of our community who said, "Hey, we got a great place here. We've got a great community." And they bussed to St. Andrews. And we got that bus to St. Andrews for two years without any issue, until last year, when it was abruptly discontinued. Some of the reasoning by the district was that some of the students were ineligible who live across the street from us. We continued to be eligible, so by law, Olentangie is required to transport my children. They offered us payment in lieu of transport, of which we decided to instead go about the fact-finding process, during which I was very disappointed with the conduct of the district and how there was very little good faith effort put forth. And I feel there's a very clear plan on the, on the part of the Department of Transportation here and its director to deny my students busing, no matter the circumstances, based on some facts that I, based on some things which are not exactly facts. They denied some of the students at the school transport based on times that were not officially conducted at the time. They did some other things that were somewhat in bad faith as far as communication with the parents. And unfortunately, a lot of the parents were left out. I luckily was able to discuss these facts, and my children were still provided busing last year under, under the fact that the discussion is still ongoing. So, I'm here today because you're about to vote on a decision to again deny busing to my children, to their desired schools. They are thriving in this school. They have great friends. They're doing great in their classrooms. One of my children is on an IEP and is advancing spectacularly, and I think it's in their best interest to keep them in their current school, especially after delivering such a emphasis on mental health, which I agree with. And if we can't provide a bus for them, they'll either have to change schools, which would be disruptive to their mental health. I might have to quit my job, which would be disruptive to my mental health, not to mention the taxes I pay and the income I have being reduced, and therefore, reduced taxes paid to the school district. Or we would have to move back closer to our school, which would also probably be detrimental to everybody's mental health. So, as you talk about this great budget, how you're getting $15 million this year, or by next year, or whenever, and from what the fact-finding discussions have had, there's a clear view in my mind that no matter what the circumstances are, the Department of Transportation is planning to discontinue busing service no matter what. No matter the number of pupils, no matter the number of people in the district. I have a lot of colleagues that are starting at my practice. I have a lot of them removing, looking for their forever home. When we moved to this district, we thought it was our dream home, our forever home, and it was until we were denied busing. So, please, as you vote on this actionable item tonight, look into my eyes and my children's eyes and tell them, when you're increasing your budget so much, like you can't provide them to a bus to my school because it costs too much. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, could you say your name one more time, ma'am? My hearing's horrible.
Dr. Laurel Barr.
Can you say the last name again?
Barr.
Oh, okay. Easy. Thank you.
Laura or Lola?
Laurel.
Laurel.
Like the flower.
Thank you, parents.
Thank you.
All right. We will go into, now we'll go into our first discussion and first reading of the board policy updates. Dr. Fettig, this is in your old role.
Yes. The, we have three policies that we are presenting for first reading tonight. They're posted on the website, is attached to this agenda. A change to student attendance policy, as well as tax appeal proceedings in district support organizations. There'll be, well, I will return to you on August 10th to ask for approval of these policy updates. Are there any questions regarding the content of the policies that were provided to you?
So, we've had the red lines. We've had the opportunity to look at the changes. Any questions on changes?
So, it's not a question, but I think there may be, you know, someone looking at these may have a bit of a question about the attendance policy.
Sure.
Can you explain a little bit about what, what the intent or what the reasoning behind it is?
Yeah. So, it's a longer explanation, I apologize, but the school attendance is more than just present or not present. And Ohio has been changing their school attendance laws a couple of times over the last few years. So, our policies have been changing to keep up with the laws. The most recent change was to exempt all medical, medically excused absences from the excessive attendance law. And it's up to a district to decide what a medically excused absence is. When there is a doctor's note, that is a certain code for us, and when a parent calls in and just says, "My child isn't feeling well today," that's a different code. So, when we adopted the most recent version of this policy in reaction to the state's change, we erred in including both of those within medically excused absences. So, what we want to do is, what we are proposing is to modify the policy to reflect what our parents have always experienced, so that there's no change on the end user's experience. And this is certainly compliant with the current law. This is the district's local purview. So, if a child is, misses school for a certain number of hours, 70 hours in the school year is the threshold set by the state, and I believe it's 38 hours in the month, without a documented medical reason, meaning like a doctor's note, that student would, our process would trigger a, what's called an excessive absence letter, which has no penalty whatsoever for the family. It's simply a letter to alert the family that your child has been absent either 37 hours in the month, or 70 hours in the year, and that is seen by the state of Ohio as an excessive amount of absences. There's no penalty for that. It's more of a notification for the family to just be aware that they've passed what the state considers to be a substantive threshold. If all of those absences are due to doctor's visits, none of those count. Anything that is a doctor's visit does not count towards excessive absences at all. The state also has rules for what they call habitual truancy, and that is the process by which the courts can get involved if a child is habitually truant from school, and these changes have no bearing on that whatsoever. So, in summary, we're trying to change the policy to best reflect our practices in alignment with the law, so that families don't get confused by any changes.
Good. Thank you so much.
Okay. Anything else on the policy updates? All right. We will now move into the treasure action items. Mr. Jenkins, please present the treasure action items.
The item for tonight is the approval of the June 20th meeting minutes.
All right. So, can I have a motion to approve Treasure Action Item A?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? I see none. Please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabricko?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
All right. So, Dr. Fettig, if you'll present the superintendent action items, I know we've got to pull a couple.
Mm-hmm.
And you've got those. I believe it's two, four, five, and seven.
Mr. Meyer and I discussed just pulling all of A. Would you like to be specific? Or just all of the certified items on Item A?
Dr. Fettig?
Yes.
I believe I had spoken with Dr. Dabricko prior to the meeting, and the ones that needed to be pulled out should be all by themselves in H, unless there were more.
Oh, yeah. I don't see it on the agenda.
On here.
It's on there?
Yeah.
So, for those that have access to board docs?
Sorry.
Look at, present your superintendent action items?
Okay. Will you say that again for me? You want me to?
H is, H has the four that need to be...
Oh, so you moved them all into H? Okay. So, I will first present A through F. And we're skipping G?
Well, G is approval of A through F.
Okay. So, I would like to submit a Superintendent, request approval of Superintendent Action Items A through F.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please? So moved. Second?
Second.
Okay. For discussion, if you would, Dr. Fettig?
Mm-hmm.
A brief overview about the transportation policy and how we determine what's practical and what's impractical.
Mm-hmm. So, it sounds like the family who spoke is aware of the, the processes that the Transportation Department went through. We have board policy and, that's guided by state law on when and how to challenge a district decision on whether or not transportation is practical. There are test routes driven to, to do timings. And also going into the decision is practicality of staffing, available staff and buses that are owned. So, I'm not, I cannot speak specifically to the situation, but we do have a number of protocols that are set in place in policy. And this is a process that the district goes through regularly.
Any questions or additional discussion on Superintendent Action Items A through F? All right. Please call the roll.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
And then, I would like to present Superintendent Action Item H, please.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please? So moved. I will second. Any discussion on H? All right. Please call the roll.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?